All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order of the plan commission. Please stand up, ladies and gentlemen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious Father, we just thank you for this day, great day that you've given each and every one of us. Father, we thank you for every breath that we have. All come from you. Father, pray that you bless this evening. Help us to do things the right way and with the help of our community, but most of all, glorify you. I thank you, give your love, your mercy, and your grace in Jesus' name.
All right, welcome everyone. We made a motion to approve the minutes of last month's meeting.
We don't have John Bass off.
John Bass.
So we don't have him.
Our attorney, John B., has been in and out of hospital, so we'll have to approve the minutes of last month. Next. All right. Are you gentlemen, no one else was on the agenda except for Wood? Do you represent Woodhurst Farms?
Yeah.
Okay, come on forward here. Welcome. Oh, yeah.
Brock, I have that on the screen behind me.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to see, but it is up there.
All right, good evening. I'm Brock Dawson. I am representing Justin Bussebarger and his wife, Lindsay Bussebarger. In 1997, this land here that's on the screen was surveyed and put into a subdivision. It's called Woodhurst Farms. Since that time, it has not been developed. There's one other individual that lives on Woodhurst Farms currently. Her name is Angela Bush. The purpose of the getting on the calendar today and the agenda is to vacate that subdivision pursuant to Indiana Code. A form has been provided, and there's also a proposed certificate of approval that chairperson should have. As I said, the only person that lives there right now is Angela Bush. She has signed a memorized instrument indicating her consent to the proposed vacation, as well as Justin and Lindsay, who are now the other people that own property out there. And obviously, Mr. Bussebarger's here if there are any questions about the land. I believe that the idea is that he will own the entire strip and just use it for himself for recreation purposes.
Approximately how many acres? Just out of curiosity, if that matters.
It was about 147 acres.
Okay.
What's the significance of the blue? Is that the flood plain or what?
The blue is just the letters. It says Woodhurst Drive. Oh, and that line is a road. That's Blue River Road, I believe. Right?
Oh.
So the whole subdivision, I don't think is highlighted, but all these little red notations in there are all the parcels.
Oh, okay. Approximately acres of woods? Do you know that? I would say there's about maybe 12 acres of public and the rest is all wooded.
Rest of the whole?
Yeah. No roads in it, vivid footy in or anything like that, no drives?
No.
It's basically the way it was when you bought it then, right?
Yes, yep.
Well, you've got Woodhurst Drive, that's...
Churchill Road there, that is a pro forma's road. They're going to build the subdivision. That's what they was going to call the road going back into all the lots, but they never built any roads or done anything to even try to, you know, start the subdivision, just sit there vacant.
Okay.
So when we vacate that?
What do you vacate? Woodhurst Drive? Where's Angela's driveway at?
First comes off into White River Road. It didn't come off of that road at all.
Good.
So you want them to vacate that road? Yes.
Okay, now, I'm trying to be, I heard, I thought I heard Blue River Road a minute ago mentioned, and then I heard White River.
It's White River Road is the road name.
The White River Road, not Blue River.
Oh, yeah, White River, I'm sorry.
Okay, because I'm having trouble seeing all of that from where I'm sitting, so... Now, we could actually be in tax dis, what, Agloin then or whatever?
Got it.
On other road.
Emily, if the, if the plat of the subdivision, I assume that you loophole the plat, it will say Woodhurst, so we also have to dissolve the road also?
If that's what that document's telling us to do, yes.
Well, does it say anything about the road? You may have to go back and tweak.
Does it say vacate the plat?
Yeah. Yes. So that would include the road?
I would read it that way. I mean, that's how I would read it.
I would thank you for that.
I think that would be included, my son, but...
All right.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you don't ever, you don't plan on dividing this back out anytime soon?
No.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I got 24 taxpayers on at the end of the day, so that's one of the reasons why I'm here.
Yeah.
Now, when you do this, just if we approve it, you'll still get, it'll take like two years to pay taxes. Okay.
Any other board members have any questions? This is pretty cut and dried, so we've done the floor.
I can motion dissolve as your request.
All right, Mr. Barris, you made a motion that we dissolve the Woodhurst subdivision plat. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hartman. Hold your finger, say aye. Aye. All right. There you go.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Your taxes just went down, or they will soon.
When that document, do we sign that as a plan commission?
No, just one signature.
And then, Brock, you have it reported?
I can have it reported.
Okay, so once it's reported, then it'll hit in the courthouse.
So there is a place on there for a witness to sign it, which typically would be attorney.
Yeah, you'll have to get John to sign it.
And then, it just won't happen until it gets reported?
Yeah.
Okay, just on the, it might be a while. So don't check GPS like tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll worry.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll just come back first, come back for that document.
Soon as we need to be interning this Sunday, we'll...
Okay, you'll have to sign it?
Yeah, we'll fire you a copy.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other needed?
Okay, next thing on the agenda is property splits, subdivision revisions. In looking at our original document that was updated in 2011, as far as the property splits, I'm going to rely on Emily and Travis heavily in this discussion because they deal with it on a day-to-day basis. But there was some question, there's a subdivision that was, well, I call it a subdivision, some property out on Old Highway 56 that was brought to our attention that, as far as I can tell and from what little information Travis has been able to get, they put a road in and they didn't, they didn't follow, follow the rules in any way, shape, or form, and this is what we want to talk about a little bit. You want to explain the situation, Travis, and then we'll get into the, what's legal according to our current ordinance in regards to defining a subdivision. The way we have it now, we have the definition of one subdivision. We don't have a major subdivision or a minor subdivision. That may or may not be something we want to amend in defining subdivisions. I don't know personally if that's necessary, maybe it is, but right now, we have a subdivision, then we have an exemption, an exempt division, which is not real plain. It just simply states that the plan commission, county commissioners, have determined that certain types of subdivisions of land do not require a thorough review. Now, I would like to know what the circumstances of that would be, and they don't require any flag. So I suppose that could be related to the way we've done things in the past as far as dividing property. Say we have a farm and the man has family members, child, grandchild, siblings, parents or grandparents, which we do allow if it's, if it's a direct relation, they don't require a subdivision permit. So once again, Travis, I'll let you touch on this.
Well, that was what Todd just mentioned, that is, I guess, 80, 90% of the situation out there for the board to make a decision. The questions come up, how close are you going to look in, you know, to the relation? If you're going to keep in joining property owners as not counting as a division? It's also come up now, using LLCs as the same person, but they're naming it something else, you know? And it's all going down and it's getting, the property is, will be getting divided and divisions are occurring, but they're not going down as actual numbered divisions that would apply to an actual subdivision. So that's, that's the questions that are coming up. So before, you know, we just went on, you know, there were on relation. So I don't know if the board wants to start exploring, you know, that, you know, it's just, you know, that's, that's kind of the situation.
How many, how many lots are listed out there? Is it five?
I believe so.
Okay, and is there five children or relation that are inherited five of them lots?
No.
Okay, so what I'm reading is from 15304 definitions, from the exempt section of 4B. In order to prevent invasion, if the subdivision control owners of property owners shall be allowed to create only one lot for transfer to each child. So there being five lots out there, if there's not five children or relation, five individuals who receive the five lots, then to me, they're in, they're subdivided a lot, they would not be exempt under 4B, the way I read that.
Say they're meeting that criteria, then they're meeting like, if I was one of the five, so I would get like, say everybody got 10 acres, but I might get 50 acres, and then I would divide it in. So then you beat it, you get it. You know what I'm saying? Like my family member divided it out so many times, and then I'm the property owner of this smaller piece, and then I'm going to divide it out so many times. Or to get out of...
But then, but you as the property owner, you need to have a, I mean, you need to go through the process of becoming a subdivision.
But as long as it said family members or joint property owners, then, or yourself, then it doesn't count. Towards the numbered, once you hit, like even, I could sell off a piece to Danielle and we're not related, that would be one. And then I could sell off a piece to Deidra, we're not related, that would be a two. And then if I go to sell off a piece to you, we're not related, that's the third split. That would qualify as a subdivision. You'd have to start this process. And I could sell off to anybody else. At any time. If that makes sense, I guess. You're just dividing my end up until you hit that third numbered split. It's all a subdivision technically, by our policy. Now, if I explain that right?
So it doesn't matter how many lots you create in your first split, is what?
Well, what they're doing is like, I own, we'll say 10 acres. I own 10 acres and I've had it surveyed off, the 10 are their lots, just for a second. When it comes in as a survey plat, it's not a subdivision plat. It's just a survey plat that I have 10 tracks of, we don't divide that into the 10 tracks. It's not a subdivision, it hasn't been approved by the board. We don't automatically divide it. So it could sit like that for eternity and never be divided, just depending on whenever the owner decides to. So it doesn't get divided automatically. It might, I might sell tot, like get 10 acres this year, and then 10 years from now, I might finally get off another track of an acre. So at the initial start, it doesn't start off in being divided into like five tracks. It'll just, as a sell-off, come off every once in a while. When we do a subdivision and it's approved by the board, as soon as it's approved and recorded, I divide it into all those lots automatically. And automatically, it would take like 27 tracks that you just put back together. But if I'm just your average person having a survey, then it's just a survey, not a subdivision, we don't do that. We wait until you sell them as they come in, over however many years it takes.
But the issue, this is a little bit different issue because we don't know if, well, I can tell you none of these people are related. There could be one, but we don't know that. So is the burden of proof on whether it's a, is relation, is it that on the landowner who wants to split it?
Again, yeah. I mean, we have to, like, I just have to, like, if you come in, you tell me you're a family member, how am I supposed to say your name? Kind of the honor system. There is a place on this, I have looked, there is a spot on the sales disclosure. Like, if the sales disclosure's done, there's a spot on there that if you're a bank, if you're a joint property owner, there's like a yes or no box, so we'll know if you're a neighbor. And on the second page or the third page, it'll ask if you got a discount as a family member. But that doesn't say, are you a family member, it's just if you got a discount. So you could always put, you didn't get a discount, then we wouldn't know. You could say, yes, I got a discount. It's just kind of a wrongy way to go about it.
Well, right now, in this particular case, everything we're talking about is based on hearsay because we, we don't know that the person who basically, to me, it's a subdivision because there was an original road into the property, and then if you go about 200 feet into the old original road, they put a new road in, parallel to Old 56, and they have lots split, three lots split off, and there are multiple relitor signs on these lots. It's a subdivision. Would you say it's a subdivision?
I don't see how, I don't see how it's not. I don't see how this is a loophole at all. I mean, there's no difference in this and anyone going to buy 30 acres and just put up 10 relitor signs and call them three, or, you know, three acre, three acre tracks, that you, that's, those are subdivisions.
On the plat, whenever the survey comes in, I'm not saying, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying, as it comes in, it doesn't fall in criteria like that. And that's where the county, you have to follow what was written down. So there was one split off that went to a person, that was number one. Then another guy bought the three lots that Todd saw about, he bought, he has one piece of property, not three lots. He got one chunk. That's number two. And then he is a new property owner, like you said, so he gets to restart. And he will sell off one, two, he'll sell on number three, so it does not count. So you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying.
Okay, so it's, it's not a subdivision. He didn't, we, every rule was followed that's written down.
So it's the verb subdivision, but it's not a noun?
Yes.
It's a what?
It's the verb subdivision.
He subdivided.
He subdivided it. He did that, but he, it is not a noun. It is not a subdivision.
So I'm just saying, as it's written down in my office, we followed it because as it's written in the ordinance, and it does not, didn't meet the criteria, call Travis. I say we got a subdivision.
Where's that in the...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I still don't totally, I mean, when you read the AR from 15304, the definition of subdivision, a division of a parcel lane into two or more lots is a subdivision. And needs, it needs to go through the process. I don't, I don't know where the, what's...
Well, go on down to exempt division, number two. That's the, that's when the waters get a little muddy.
Yeah. Sure, and then that's, that's where I was reading from the exempt division of 4B. That was on, given...
I think he has another definition.
Relation.
If you look at 4C, it says, division of land for purpose of single family, which does not involve any new public road, public drainage, easement, or other new public improvement, which creates a new lot. And a remaining track. See, I don't see how it cannot be a subdivision. And to me, the kicker is the road. They built a new road.
But if you look on the survey and follow the perpiche on the deeds, it's not a road, it's an easement to get into those properties. So it's not a road, it's just access to go in. It's not one...
I'm not going to argue that what it's...
But I'm just saying, when it comes, like, that's where...
Yeah, on, on your end, but on our end, as far as the plan commission, it's a subdivision. Travis, do you think it's a subdivision? Why isn't it? Well, why is this any different than that fellow that come over here on, from Mann Road, bought a farm? Bought a farm and put his own road in and didn't tell us, like, these four, why is that any different? He's got it divided according to the surveyor's office. Why is that any different than this?
Say that again, he didn't tell us about the...
No, let's say he didn't notify.
Oh, say he did.
Just like this person did. Why is that any different? I don't understand the difference.
Well...
So, so it is an exempt? If it's not exempt and if it's not a subdivision, then what is it?
Well, I'm going off just what's, what's roads and our subdivision rules, okay? I'm just, you know, that's the first thing I was talking about. Now, what Emily's looking at...
I don't know. I'll be right back. Come around my office, I can get some documents. That's it?
Is...
I can use this on my office.
You have a driveway that went up to a owner of one of these parcels, and they're using the same driveway entrance. Went up 50 feet and then went off right off of this driveway, and now they're making other driveway entrances to these other two or three parcels, which, under this, under the exempt definition, they are able to do that. So, you know, I don't know if you want to take off on, you know, on the same, you know, it's a subdivision because our opinion is, the board's opinion, it's a road, and forget the definitions of how many divisions it's happened. I mean, that's two different things. I was just talking, what I was first talking about was just the divisions. I wasn't even figuring in or, you know, putting that in the thought process of this road and this driveway, because we didn't get an okay for a driveway, any other, nothing. I mean, it came to me, I don't think Emily did or anybody else that I know of, it's just an existing driveway entrance. So, and then this, the siblings and the jointed property owners, and I think there was an LLC involved with, with one of the individuals, and we were adding up and, you know, what actually was a division? And Emily and her office was coming up with one, I think two maybe, but it didn't qualify as a subdivision. So, I mean, that's just where we're at with it.
153.04 definition, division of a parcel of land into two or more lots, parcel sites, units, flats, or entries for the purpose of offer, sale, lease, or development either in installment plan or any other plan's terms and conditions, including re-subdivision. Subdivision includes a division.
Now, to me, like, it's a subdivision. Is it, it's the first? 153.04, the definition of a subdivision.
Right, but we have never done that. I mean, uh, well.
So the board would not follow our own rules, is that what it's saying? It is plain, it's black and white. The division of a parcel of land into two or more lots, parcels, sites, units, flats, or entries for the purpose of offer, sale, lease, or development, either on the installment plan or any other plans, terms and conditions, including re-subdivision. It's as plain as day. That's a subdivision, but just define it. That's what they did. Now, I would like for somebody to tell me what's wrong about that paragraph. I don't, I don't understand. They have lots for sale. They got a road going in, just happened to be there for a long time, and they built a new road, an offshoot, so they can get to these lots that they have for sale for the purpose of offer or sale.
Well.
Is it, is that it right there?
Yeah, that's it.
Well, that's it, it's not, this computer's not completely up to date. But that's the start of it.
If you look at that house, it's basically right in the middle.
Yeah.
That's the driveway, and I'm looking at it going north.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's just the driveway to that home. Go in off of, that's Old 56, right?
Yeah.
Okay, going off Old 56 about, you know, like I said, about 50 feet, 100 feet, whatever, to, to about the middle of that clearing before the wood start. It shoots off right, going to the east. Then you've got two or three parcels right there, and you've got another one there to the left.
Do, do you have a copy of that map you gave me?
I don't have it, I have it on the back.
And this is, this was a ser, a private survey?
Yeah, one of them is on the right, I'll show you. But I have that because it goes along.
Can I make a copy of it?
I would have to make a copy, I should have. You know, this drawing, this is my research only. This purple piece is that top one above the driveway, too, the driveway is? The driveway. Right now, it could be all of these pieces of the block. This purple one is those two buildings at the top. This. History, even though it's not.
4C.
They got this piece when they were married. They got divorced, she got this piece, and then this piece. So then, we divided in this survey, not in my office, I'm looking through into these tracks. But when this gets recorded, is this a survey or is this just a, a plaque of a subdivision?
The only reason it's not a plaque of subdivision is because they didn't submit plans for a subdivision. That's pretty easy. I could do that all day long.
But once it's recorded, I don't see any.
Is part of the issue, as a bigger picture, not just the specific pieces?
They're all over there.
This in yours.
Yeah, okay. Is part of the issue. Because if I had 100 acres and I sell two acres and 10 years later, or five years later. But because it's, this time has elapsed.
But like, if this first gets, I guess my question is in my office. And I can be wrong in that respect. My question is, this gets reported and we're put in my office. How do I know that these aren't going to all family members? If it's family members, it doesn't say it on here, it doesn't say. And we don't have a title for that, it doesn't say that it's not a family members. I don't know that who needs them. So when this first gets reported, I don't know to flag it because it could all be family members, I don't know.
Because it says some divisions are not subject to the requirements of this subchapter beyond the determination by the plan director or staff that have met the terms. So they should go to him, whoever the plan director is, and the plan director tells you that they're exempt. Is what that says to me.
But on this, it also says that it's an easement. That's another thing.
Then that's up to the plan director to, or staff, to determine if that truly is an easement or if it truly is what that says to him. Or whoever is in that position. And then if that doesn't, then they come to us and ask for, they just come to get, or to zone the appeals and ask for variances or whatever the process is, I have enough.
Or, or simply the plan director decides that this is not an exempt subdivision, they just, so it doesn't mean they can't do it, they just need to bring that, bring their plan to us. And I'm not, I don't know that it's a subdivision. Not, wouldn't be a nice subdivision, it just, you can't skip the steps. Not to mention that they're not, they're selling the lot, so they're paying taxes on one lot. And they're just.
Well, questions, since they've got these three lots up for sale. There are just some, we went over today.
One's already sold.
Our real estate agent, we went out.
He goes over.
We're not family or anything.
So this easement to a road, is this a, is this fault, is there, are they required to have a property owner's association that's going to take care of this road? I mean, they, they never, that's what I don't understand, they never, they never came to us. But to me, we need to protect these future homeowners, and that's what the rules of a subdivision are there for. Um, I, I don't see, I don't see any other way than this, the developers just bypassing the plan commission.
Danielle, we, we were having multiple conversations. Would you repeat what you just said about the plan director should have been contacted for, they do have the option of maybe being exempt, but first and foremost, they should have contacted him and he makes the call.
Correct. 153.04. Because as exempt subdivisions are not subject to the requirements of this subchapter beyond the determination by the plan director or staff that they meet requirements for exempt subdivisions set forth herein. So if Travis or whoever the plan director determines that reuse subdivisions says that it's exempt, then it would be exempt. But if it doesn't, if it meets one of those criteria, then, and it's exempt, he says you're going to go to exempt. If it doesn't meet, and he says it's no, you're not exempt, then they can go forward as though they are creating a, like, subdivision. In my opinion, based upon what is in writing on number three. Now, did they go to him and ask him? Probably not. So I guess that's part of the re, or the enforcement is that they did it incorrectly. So how do we make it, how do, we get it correct now that they've been selling and doing this? I haven't read far enough to know if there's penalty or what.
Well, I think Andrew made a good point. These rules for subdivisions are there for the protection of the landowners. You know, who's to say when these properties change hands, relative or not relative, who's going to take care of the road? I can tell you who's going to take care of it. They're going to expect the cabbie to because there're going to be some disgruntled people in a few years that's going to show up at a commissioners' meeting and wonder why they can't give a load of stone on their road. Well, they have no restrictive covenants, they have no, they have no homeowners association. There's nothing that we can do about it, period. So I guess the only way to resolve this is to contact the landlord and find out what their intentions are and inform them that they, well, that they're qualified people, but they need to, they need to understand what they did. It's not going to work. I, I dare say it would be Indiana County, the state of Indiana, allow this.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Emily, jump in here. But it, it could have been also, I think this is a very good possibility of what's going on out here, that, you know, it wasn't where everything came in in one week with five sales. It could have been over time, maybe a shorter period of time. One sale happened, that's supposedly a relation. And then a phone call, a random phone call came into my office. Hey, could you explain, which has happened a bunch of times, could you explain the definition back here? How many sells, how many divisions can we have off this piece of property? Just a random person calling, and it could have been this person saying, how many, can you explain this to us? And if we sell this to so-and-so, a relation of whatever that fits in that definition, is it going to be a division? And no, it's not. So maybe they made one sale and then it just sat for a while.
It's their relation.
It's their relation.
So that, that's probably a kicker that we need to consider here, is is them proving that they are a relation?
That was the discussion we were, the board, I was hoping we'd have.
How in the world are you going to do that? We had this discussion down in her office a week ago about this. And Dana said, is it my job here in this office to look up somebody's genealogy to prove this?
It's their responsibility to bring it in to, to, to us.
Ver, ver certificate or something? Ver certificate.
That's fine, I don't care what it is. But, you know, I could go in and say, well, I'm related to Danielle. And, and then pass this whole thing off. Uh, to me, the burden of proof is on, on them if we say they need to do that.
Who, who told, who told anyone in this whole ordeal that someone was related to anybody out there? Because I have a hard time believing that. Why would somebody sub, sell a lot off or give a lot to someone related to them? And then go down this new road they put in? And all of a sudden, if they had intentions of selling it to a relative, all of a sudden, there's two or three different realtor signs out there for sale. Now, I don't think those people are related. She's selling it for.
I'm not going to argue that. But I'm saying, when you're in an office working, and in one year, a plaque gets reported, and then six months to a year later, I sell off part of my property, which you can do, sell it off one time and you still own the rest, that's one sell-off. And I still own the rest. I did a breaking rules. I sold off the house and I kept the grant. Everyone's in the green.
Yeah.
That's one sell-off.
But there's three other lots after this.
And then the next deed that came through, even though the plaque says that it's three lots, that's not how it was warranted. It doesn't say lots, one, two, and three. It puts them as one piece of property. That would be the second sell-off. Which technically, we just said you can do two of them. That's not breaking any rules. Then the new owner is selling off this piece of the second sell-off two times.
So after the second one, that's it? Can't have a third one?
If you sell off the third time.
If it's not, if it doesn't fit into that number two. I mean, you can, I just showed Kevin this, and we'll pull it up here on the forehead if you want. Just, just picture this, I mean, we're only talking five parcels of property. What if you had, you know, the guy had three or four kids and then, you know, he gave one parcel to five kids? Okay, those are five divisions right there.
But that's a good.
Yeah, and then they wanted to sell off two parcels each of this property. Well, you're talking five divisions times two on each. And then you look at it on the map, oh my gosh, what's going on? Look at the subdivision, but they followed the rules.
They followed them.
Totally.
Because it's the verb and not the noun.
So whenever it, when it's, when you're sitting in here, I'm agreeing with everything you are saying, but when you're in the office and you're following as it's warranted, it doesn't fit, I don't know, it doesn't fit that.
So what, what do we need, what do we need?
Because I'm looking at that survey plaque, it looks like I'm going to buy my property at five ways. Eventually, or I might not ever, but right now, when I pay for that survey, that's what I thought I wanted. And most people wouldn't like to have a driveway. Or, and on their deed, it's an easement to get back in there. It doesn't say it's a road, it doesn't say it's a public road, it says the easement to get in and out. And almost every property in Washington County doesn't have an easement. So if I were to look at that survey plaque, as soon as it was recorded, I put it in my system, oh, well, that they actually run an easement for these people to get in and out.
So if I purchased one of those three tracks, let's say I purchased number one and I have to use that easement. When I purchase track number one, there's no, there would be something on my deed on there that says that I have an easement, this is not taken care of by the county commissioners.
It doesn't say it's not taken care of.
But, but that, you, it says, it says on there, this is an easement, this is not a road, this is not something that anybody is going to take care of.
Give you access to the property.
Okay.
So I'm not arguing, I don't, I don't think I'm arguing, I think that you are wrong, I don't think you're wrong.
I understand.
But I don't think that, I guess wrong saying, I don't know if that's just agreeing with me, maybe I'm not, that's okay. Because I don't, I don't care if anyone agrees with you or not, but when the plaque gets recorded or the survey gets reported, those are two different words. A plaque is a subdivision and a survey is just a survey. Do whatever you want to with it. Is that when we need to flag it? It gets reported, I see it, and I'm like, oh, this has five tracks on here, I need to call Travis. Or do I lay to the line and get sold off here? Like, when does that kick in?
I guess I have a question about when somebody would send you a survey that had the, the, something like this, that had one piece of property, but then they put it into three tracks or four tracks or however many. What would be some reasons that they would do that other than they're thinking about selling it in the future?
Well, we're in Washington County, it's because a farmer wants to, or a grandparent or whoever, in their mind, they're thinking ahead that this is how they want their property eventually split off and they die or.
Or subdivided.
And they have the money right now and they're going to pay to have the survey and stake off that way. But I don't ask the people at the time of the survey. They don't bring it to me first. It gets reported, they pay the fee to record it, it's $25, and then a week later, I get it. So I don't talk. If you were to have it done, you would have brought it to me first and be like, here, Emily, what do you think of this? I've already paid the surveyor to do it. That's how I got my copy and it gets reported. And then I would see it later. So do you leave something before? So do you leave it stopped then before it gets reported? Because you can report anything, they can't deny you can report anything, you can report it anyway. But, do we tell them then? Or do we just...
It might say the law agreed, you told, just ask them, is this a sub, are you...
So they're reporting lots and sets up?
Are you selling lots, first, are you selling lots, subdividing and going to sell them? To me, it's all about, you know, it's not so much someone deeding off a piece of property to two or three or four or five children or grandchildren, it's someone selling lots for profit, for gain, which is what this person is doing. Otherwise, there wouldn't be two or three realtors' signs out there for sale.
Well, I... But...
Hold it.
The issue is, regardless of whether it is a family member, right? Because, I mean, our farm, there was three sections that was divided off to my in-laws that then sold them.
And they're not being...
And none of that is family anymore, so they're...
Here's what I don't like, and I'll just flat out tell it to you, because I see it every day. I don't think there should be a loophole. I don't think that I should be, that I need it to my kid first, so then they can be a dating group, but I didn't want to get a subdivision. I don't think it should matter to your family. If, if that's where we're at, it shouldn't matter to your family or mom. How many times did you divide it? More than two? It's a subdivision, you need to go. I mean, that's, it shouldn't matter. I'm not, I don't want to be that way, but, if that's where we're at, then that's where we're at, because they, they know how to get around.
Emily, because Emily's office, it's, just like she said, I do agree with you.
Thanks, you didn't argue with me.
No, but, you know, we, you know, our, before Emily was, you know, in the office surveyor, and I worked with other surveyors, and then, she has the same, we're going by the same rules, nothing's changed, but, you know, what she's saying, what you guys are wanting to do, as soon as it goes down as a, NA non-exempt parcel, you would have to flag it.
Right.
Right there, it'd have to stop. I don't think that's right. But we've had it. Now, just a little brief history, before, you know, anybody was on the board here, this same discussion happened before. I'll just tell you what the other board members, because, you know, I don't think, and personally, off the record, I don't think that's fair. I mean, you would have to, just as soon as you get it exempt, because it's a family member, you're going to have to flag it and stop it, because you're going to get into these, well, that, you know, well, it's got flagged and stopped. Now, I can't, tie passive pine you're wanting to sell this property, or, you know, you've got a person that wants to just buy part of it, just for whatever reason, he can't sell it, or come up with, you know what I'm saying?
He could go before BZA came in. That's exactly what I was thinking.
Well, no, I'm saying, if you want to try to stop what's going on, you would have to just, all of them, what Emily's saying. And I'm saying that's not right.
I don't think you should follow anybody in the court house to say that you are or are not a family member. I don't think that I get to look at you and say, you're not related to them, or, well, you're just a step, or you're adopted, or you're, well, you didn't, they took you into your own, and you called up your family, but you're not. Who, who was anybody in our court house to say that's anybody? Do you want to hear that from somebody? Because I don't. I don't, and I don't think that my office and my girls that work for me, that's not where they're from. They need DNA history, for ancestry, I don't know.
Or the BZA making a decision on what relation you are, or, I mean, that's the only way you could be, I mean, we've said that, I remem, said the same thing, you know, you would have to flag it, just write it being exempt, just to stop this from extra two divisions, you know, of this, of this same thing happening. There's no way around it.
I agree.
Or you leave it as it, as it is.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Or we just make it more clear.
But the tru, the trigger should be a, when someone puts a new road in, and sells lots off of the new road, here's what's going to happen in five, 10, 15, 20, 30 years, somebody...
But if all of those, say that was you, I'm just putting this out there, say it was you, and you did that, and you set it up as three lots, and you put it in on a survey as an easement, and it was one for your mom, and one for your...
But don't go, but forgive them.
But if they were, but we don't know that when it's reported, that that's all to be sold off that way. What if you were setting it up, that this is how you wanted it to look, so each family member could have an easement, what the survey says is an easement, to go into those properties? If it was family members, and it got reported that way, which I don't love their family members right off, but if that was your intention...
That is nothing...
Is that different? Because when you look at it, I don't see it as a road.
You would?
I don't see it as a road. My driveway is not a road.
Yeah, where, where does it say, just, I'm, I'm just talking, I'm not arguing, you know, what you think. Yeah, I would agree, yeah, it looks, it does look like a road, you kind, you know, these divisions coming off drivers or whatever, but if we're following what we have, what qualifies as a road, right now, just as is?
Where's the mailman?
Like, on the...
No, right now, why is that a road? We're, we're saying it's a road, why is that a road?
It's up to the highway superintendent and you to decide.
It's not up to me to decide, it's up to the highway department.
Well, it should have been up to you, had they come to you, and you made the determination whether it was exempt, but they didn't come to you, so you didn't know, you just found out.
But how many people in Washington County have shared a driveway? Are those roads?
No.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm not playing devil's advocate, I'm just saying, when a survey says an easement, it doesn't say Walker Road, or Wilson Road, it says it's an easement.
Right.
So a subdivision, you don't call those easements, you're calling them roads. You want them, you want them to be kept nice, you want them to be paved, you want them to be...
I'm thinking of public safety, I'm thinking of an ambulance, I'm thinking of the mailman, I'm thinking of a school bus driver.
Okay, but think short corner road, not letting names people live there, but there's a driveway, right as soon as you turn off. I live a mile off, but it will call a half mile to the left. That house is at the end, and there's three houses down that road, and it's a gravel driveway. You're saying that's a road.
That's great, bother.
But if it were to be set up today, you're either telling me that that's a roadway, and it is, we brought Rick Boyle to come and see it, it's not a shit, there's three houses live on that road, it was divided off two times, and everybody's sharing a driveway. I don't know that in my office.
Yeah, I know you don't.
So, that, that survey, when you look at it...
Did the driveway entrance go into somebody's house that, yeah?
And they're granting every, that might buy, that might buy, because we don't know, maybe I'm going to buy the last two lots, and then it's just a big piece of property that we share a driveway, with an easement. I don't, we all, I don't know that. And, I think when you pull up their addresses, when they go that house, I don't know, but I don't, I don't bet they're going to name that easement a name, I bet their mailboxes are going to be all 56, and that's going to be their address. I just have a feeling.
You've got this same situation, just like this, I mean, I could go up this map and pull five, three or four of them up, like, right there, that driveway will go back in there, and then, same situation, and then it'll come off, just like it is now, with not one entrance except the existing one, and all their addresses will be all 56.
And there'll be mailboxes at the end.
At the end. And they'll say, we're not arguing, what...
I'm not, I'm just...
We're not arguing this, we're just going by what is, what we have in our ordinance, and what we have to abide.
And we can change it, then we'll...
Yeah, you guys can, yeah.
Look, let me ask you this, Emily, you touched on, you touched on this, if that will for be sectioned or to be gone, no, there was no exemption for any type of relation, obviously that would make it a little bit more challenging to, in our example, to divide up a farm for inheritance purposes, but the challenge would just be coming to the land commission and going through the process, is that you still, you still have survey done, and then you go through the steps of...
Well, let me back you up. You don't have to have the survey done to divide property, so, it, it's still part, you don't, as long as you have a surveyable legal restriction, you don't have to have the survey done. That would be nice, if you had to have the survey done to divide property, if that was a rule in Washington County, that'd be nice, but it's not. But if you had to have the survey to divide your property, that would help, because then at least we know, you know, what you're, like, we could see by that survey, that there was going to be five tracks, but if I wanted to just have five, I'm going to sell off 12 acres here, and then, no survey, this is, the survey property line is, and then, another one comes a little later, and there's a survey done, and here's the legal one, the survey property line is.
Would that make your job easier?
Oh, definitely, I think that would make everybody's job easier. If you have fans out there, you know where your property is, builders can have better times building, you know where your, how far off your property line you are, but buildings and your porches and your houses, and you don't have to guess, and build on your neighbor, and then go to court.
So, as, as long, as long as not necessarily needing a survey to divide the property, but survey if it changes hands?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not saying that's what you should do, I'm just saying, okay, five bodies here.
So I have a question.
What?
So, my grandpa passed away, get five grandchildren, me and four others, and all five of us received part of that property as part of our inheritance from him. We did not buy it, he did not subdivide it, and, and with the intent for us to purchase it from him. It was upon his death, we were given that. Is that different than what we're talking about right now? It was deeded to me upon his death, that's different than...
A, a 20% answer, so...
Is it being divided, or are you sharing it as ours?
No, he, he gives, there's 50 acres, he gives each of us, there's five of us, he gives each of us 10 acres of that 50 acres.
No divisions, since you're all related, then it would just be, it would not count for a subdivision, it would be, but we call it ends.
Because that's what I'm like, here, the divi, subdivision is the division of a parcel of land, and the two or more lots, parcel, site, unit, platter, and just for the purpose of offer, I don't know what that means, sale, lease, or devoting.
Now, on your, to your point, in, in the exempt one, if you go to section B, each, you have grand, your grandchildren that says, and each of you get one lot, that is exempt. Now, that sounds, that's fine, in my, in my opinion. Now, where it gets hairy, is now Danielle has 10 acres, and now she wants to put three, sell three lots of that 10 acres, and her five, four cousins...
All my...
Want to do that, so now they have 15 lots going up on that, and it was, and it never goes through the process of a subdivision, and that, that's not right.
So if I would take my 10 acres and divide it into two 5-acre lots, and I'm not, and I'm not giving it to my children, grandchildren, siblings, or parents, or grandparents, then it becomes a subdivision.
Then, you own 10 acres, and you sold off 5 acres.
No, I'm selling two 5-acre lots.
But that's not how it's reported. Like, we'll say, like, document A gets reported, you sell the, you sold 5 acres, you might have done it instead, you sold me 5 acres, and you sold Travis 5 acres. When it gets reported, they have recording numbers, so we have to go in order. So, for a split five seconds, Danielle has sold me five, but she owns five, so that second one is not a split, you just gave your remaining parcel tracks, so that was only one, one sell-off, right? So that's a sell-off. You still own property. Like, you could sell it twice, but you own three parcels, but you only sold off two pieces because you have a remaining piece, a parent parcel always hanging out.
Where's only two new numbers for...
Two new number, two, we call, so we call them parent and children. I own the parent parcel, and I'm going to deed off a little bit, that's a child number, it became like 1.01, that was the first sell-off, and I still own 1.0, and then I sold off the second one, and that would be 1.02, but I still own what's left, and it's just getting smaller, a 1.0. So that, for five seconds, you didn't do a split off, you just sold your whole parcel to Travis.
Well, with this land going up through, through a couple of different roof, so there were these three lots, so has the health department already weighed in to say, these lots are all perked and ready to go? Can you do that, can you sell off something like a lot, and...
In my office, I don't need to ask if you've got any, I know.
Because that's only going to apply if you...
Built.
Are building a lot.
I'm going to buy this piece of property and then...
Or I'm going to buy it and just sell it. We don't feel like it, I don't want to misinterpret, I don't know, I'm not, that might sound helpful, but I don't mean to plead that, I just, it's just land, you know, like it's land. I don't care if you have a house on it, I don't care, you got cows on it, we just, and this survey is obvious, it's legal restriction, what's the land look like? How's it feeling? It's more than that, but when it comes to dividing it, it doesn't...
It was, I'll just throw this out real quick, back when we were in subcommittees, starting on the subdivision ordinance, it was mentioned that, like in this case here, if you had the driveway, and you're coming in, and you're creating whatever, these five parcels, when you had three separate parcels created, or three separate addresses, it was automatically would go into a road and a subdivision. No matter if it was relation, whatever, if that happened, like Todd was mentioning, it au, it automatically becomes a road, it automatically becomes a subdivision.
Where's that written at?
It wasn't, it got, it was not passed, and then it went into the relation.
So, if there was wording that said, that if a, a drive, a roadway, gives access to more than, to residences, then it would be classified as a roadway and fall under the criteria that we have in ordinance for a road. So if I had, I mean, just hypothetically, so if I had my house and my driveway, and sold off, or gave off a section of property, that, that driveway then became the access point to that second property. Then it, maybe it's, it remains a driveway to two, but then the point where a third one, a third residence goes back there, then it falls under different criteria, and it has to be brought up to the specs that we have.
Well, it was supposed to fall into a subdivision, which, then the road were going to be whatever we decided on, so, yeah.
But I bought that first parcel, I had the two of us that purchased that first parcel and didn't know that that third parcel was going to be sold, and all that, then it's, then now I'm going to have the expectation that I'm going to pay part of the, part of the green, part of the fees for bringing that up to...
It would, I don't know, but...
But the issue, if we take, if, if we set aside everything about, is a person a family member, right?
Or a neighbor, or yourself, those count too.
A joint, property owner.
A joint, property owner, or yourself, those also count as a name, it's not just your family members.
But, but what is the purpose of, like, what is the concern, what is the purpose of having an ordinance about subdivisions, right? It is land usage, it is concentration of, of homes within a particular area of land, right? It is access into those homes. I think we need to, to revisit the purpose of having the planning... I think we need to, to revisit the purpose of having the planning commission. You know, the, of everything that we're doing. I mean, we're talking about, at what point does the concentration of residences, of structures on any set piece of property meet a, a different criteria?
And I'm not saying any more categories in Washington County. It's okay. I look at you.
That's what you're getting at.
Because I deal with you every day.
Can you talk about that?
A little bit. No, not really, but I don't think, like, in my opinion, these people did not do anything wrong. And I could be wrong, but following criteria, they didn't. I'm not saying that shouldn't be a subdivision. But I don't think it should be same as Woodworth Farm. But we just say it. It's not the same. Those are individual lots. These people are over 2 acres or more than 12 acres. I think that there should be different categories. Like, they divided up 140, how much was it, 140 something? And this was like 20. Like, I don't think that's the same. They developed 30 something lots and they have five tracks. I don't know that, they're not putting in a roadway necessarily, although it ends up being a road, but that's not. I don't know if that makes sense to me. But I don't think they're the same type or same category or same. The land is getting divided, but I don't, I think like that would be like, I don't know what this means. I think that the major subdivisions, that's a lot of lots, that's a lot of segments, that's a lot of work.
But you're also looking at time.
And I think that five is smaller than bigger. Like, I don't think those should, I don't think that makes sense. I, I think that other, other counties have different categories of subdivisions. They're like minor, major, exempt. We just have subdivisions and exemptions. That's it. And I think maybe, I haven't read into it because it doesn't qualify for me, so I don't read enough people's, I want to mention it, but that might be where, and I told Todd this in, that might be where those categories come. I don't know. But it might. They have minor subdivisions and they have major subdivisions. I say major subdivisions, I don't know, but I bet there's, I bet those would be two different ones right there.
So which counties have those that surround?
Harrison County is written up that way. I haven't read about minor and major because we don't have those. But like Jackson County has different types of subdivisions. Harrison County does. It's in the ordinance we have right here in front of us. I'm not saying that that, but if we want to do that, I think that there's different.
When these exemptions were created, I'm just throwing this out there. It was just, time just went by. We had a totally different board and there was a lot of people out here in the audience and there was a lot of pushback to give siblings, the relation, all this exempt. And that's why it was passed. There was a lot of pushback from the crowd, people, you know, questions. And then the board members that were here, that's how it was happened. So the board decided that's what the, of the ones, that's what we want to do. So here we are.
May I ask, isn't that easement the only way to get to those, they could build individually?
Driveways?
Yeah.
A small, a small, a little 56, not getting a permit for the driveways and put them 50 feet apart as they wanted to? Yeah, I can, they couldn't. I mean, I don't know that, but they could. They should use, that that comes in. Todd says it's already put in. It's physically there.
Yeah, they, they could've, but you know, nobody really wants that because it's kind of dangerous. I mean, maybe, they'd be pretty close, but probably, probably could've.
Because that's what I was wondering, is that, our problem is that it has this easement that we think is a road. If it didn't have that easement and they were just pulling it out onto a road from there.
If they just put gravel down and it wasn't an easement, would we lock it on it?
That's what I'm asking.
I W W it myself. I'm not saying we wouldn't. I just think that if I dug 17 tons of gravel at my house two years ago and nobody came asking about it.
It would be a perfect, yeah. Land kind of thing.
To me, it looks like a responsible way to divide property. That's what it looks like to me. And if I was buying in that, I got easement.
But you're, but you think it's a responsible way, it may be a responsible way on the driveway, but there again, like the board college mentioned, I started thinking about did, we're talking about safety, the fire, fire truck, and it was back to some of those. It's, it's the exact same thing with what we, what we run into with Indian land. They, they'll take care of the road. And allegedly, we'll have the same thing there for that, or mine.
I mean, it's not very long. It's not going to take a lot of money to keep it up, but eventually, I mean, it's going to need some rock every year or so.
Eventually, it'll probably change hands.
And it'll change hands.
So how, so. It's going to sound like a hand dog. So for the Amish dudes, I'd go for that.
They're from pretty much one driveway in, one driveway. I don't know. Alright, so what would you suggest we do? Just kind of just let, let this go and think about what Emily said about major, minor subdivisions. I still think it's a subdivision, but.
I think it's a subdivision, but I think that it needs to be any, it's illegal. I don't think that, and I could be wrong, but I don't think.
It's a subdivision, but it's not illegal.
Not illegal. They fault me. It was.
Only if they're all related, it's an exempt, you think it's an exempt subdivision.
If you follow the one, two sell off rule.
One, two sell off.
So this whole thing.
That's how it's always been done. So I'm just saying by the way that Jeff did it and I did it and I was talking of it, all rules were followed the way it's told to be done.
But the one, two sell off, the, the, the child lots that he was talking about, they were created after the, uh, May 1st of 2011. If you read the documents, it says that permitted for any tract of contiguous tract of land under the same ownership and, and existing as of May 1st, 2011. So these child ones that they're, they're selling off, they wasn't in existence before May 1st, 2011. They can't split and sell off like the old ones can. The child ones ain't had more child, child divisions. Only the parent can split off twice and then that's, that's the end of your division. You can't say, well, I give it to my kid and now my kid gives it to his two kids. If it wasn't in existence before May 1st, 2011, they don't get a split again.
Biden in Washington County. I'm not saying that that's not wrong, but I'm just saying.
That's what's in yours.
I know, but I'm just saying that there's a lot of child numbers out there that are still very big parcels that have been created after 2011. And we're saying that since it didn't look that, you can't divide them again 50 years later.
Well, without telling, they won't be exempted until you, as exempt, they have to come forward and then be divided in a regular subdivision manner. They're just no longer exempt because they were created after the, the deadline.
Thanks, Max. And I think I have to reiterate, reiterate that no, I'm certainly not. I don't, I don't hear from anybody else saying that these should not be subdivisions. These should not be allowed. They should, but they should not be exempted and they should have to go through our process.
When do, when do we tell them that? Like Danielle said, is it after the, at the beginning or after people have already bought it? And that's why I'm saying, if that's what we're going to do, that's fine. But the reporter sees it first, so do I need to go tell them? Hey, when you see a survey come through with more than one track line, ask them if that's going to be a subdivision and if they're going to make money on it? If it is, send the track to their office first.
We need to, Travis needs to be the one that makes the call, not them assuming that. Yeah.
But is that once it's reported? Or once, once someone already buys it? This is, this is why I always get so frustrated and it's not against you guys, it's just the courthouse in general and it's, it happens everywhere. I've already bought it from Danielle. I bought it last Thursday. Money is in your bank account. Next Wednesday, it gets mailed to me at work. Alright, is Danielle going to give me my money back because what she did was right?
Again, the surveyor's office will be the first one to catch it if anything is replatted and split and surveyed, right?
After it's already been sold, after, say I bought it, this is just hypothetical, I've never bought property from Danielle. But she's going to sell some, even if it's not a split. It's already money, I've already wrote the check. I've got my mortgage debt goes to Danielle and either the week of or the week after, two weeks, wherever that title company decides to bring it in, or I walk it over myself. I've already split my money. Now, whose responsibility? I'll catch it, that's fine. But whose responsibility is it? Because now I've already bought it. Whose responsibility is it to do that? What if it's a contract?
That'd be a good question for the Indiana State Surveyors Association.
Or for John E., our attorney. I understand.
You could call the state and ask.
I'll, I'll see what they tell me, but I guarantee you that they're going to say, it happens everywhere. I mean, when this thing was first created about the subdivision splits, that you guys have to accept that every title company in town, blah, blah.
Tried to.
So we should probably do that. Because the title company is going to hit it before money's transferred, before it hits the courthouse. And then we can be in the back of it. If somebody is known before the money's already, if we're worried about the people living there and their concerns, shouldn't we worry about it before they've already gave? Money? That's where I'm going from. Whenever they're standing in front of me and I say, you can't do that, it's too late. And I don't mind being the bad person, but it's, if you come to me or your kids come to me, are you going to be mad that I sent them out? Or you can send you out because it doesn't work? We can do it, that's fine. That's our job. But then where do they go? What process do they go to? I just think that other, they should be known outside of me and outside of the courthouse. That this is the way it needs to be, because it's always been done this way. So another one's Washington County, they've always done it this way. I'm not saying that means it's right. It's always been done this way. Everyone knows it's done this way. Everyone knows how to get around it. We call Travis, we call Travis. I don't know how many times, just in this year, we called you because we thought we had a third split that is a subdivision. We try to, we, it's not like we want to catch them, but like, we don't want it to be done wrong. We call you, at least three times this year, I think we've called. And.
Well, yeah, at least.
I mean, we try to catch them. I just think that it should happen before any of this, should it be the first sell off? You can't sell your property, you can't split your property at all without a main subdivision?
But again, it becomes in one amount of time. I mean, how far historically do we go back to decide that this has been split multiple times? Every property in county has been split multiple times. I've got 120 acres and it's part of what was once a larger property and it was family that divided that off.
Well, even like, and I'm, just this property in general, I researched it back to whenever it was first got just to see if this might have been the way we've always done it. We made a mistake in my office because we made mistakes. Everyone makes mistakes. No one's perfect. It was a, it's no one's business, but it was spouses dealing to themselves. That's an NA. That's how they got the first piece of property. Then, I'm assuming they got divorced. I don't know that in real life, but he deeded to her that piece of property. So she got the whole. It wasn't a split. She got what was, she got that number plus a split from what was there. That counts as a number one because you're not related, but it doesn't count as a number one because technically the order that it got done in, she was a neighbor. So there's another one that doesn't count. You see where I'm going with that? There, there's already two.
The, the intention of what our board is saying and the way they're using.
So when it started, it was family. And I assume that it had to be done this way for reasons that are unknown to me, that more property was acquired. But that's two, that doesn't count. And then she had it surveyed into five. And I saw surveys come in that looked just like that and it's because a grandpa or a great grandpa wants to be sure that in his mind, his kids are all took care of and there's going to be no arguing when they pass away. And there might be five kids, but four of them don't want anything to do with one ground and they don't want any of that property. So only one of them gets it in any hidden way. So that happens. People will survey and put tracks on them all the time, but they never do anything with them. For, for years, they don't do anything with them. And just because he's wanted that doesn't mean he had it written out that that's the way it's going to happen. We don't know your intention behind the survey.
Well, I'll tell you what I believe. I believe the lady that owns this property is doing it. She's selling off parcels for gain. And I, I would consider her a developer.
Then that's okay, but in my office, I don't get to make that call.
If she's a developer, she builds a new road, that takes it to subdivision. Says so right in our ordinance.
But when it comes to offices, we can only do, go and make the call. Dana, it needs to be exactly what I instructed them to do. And I'll take the line with the Trump. I instructed them, this is what happens.
Well, there's no way you could have taught.
It's stuff. Because that's how I was instructed when I got hired.
Alright, so the question is, what, what, what are we going to do about this?
I think it's always going to be a problem. I don't know if there's a way to get around it myself. And that's just me being serious because I go through that every day. I don't know. You guys might go on and think about it full of the names and I'm more than willing to hear it, but it's just.
I mean, had someone not drove by and saw it, you wouldn't know it. And you can't, no problem about Travis because he, he owns a big county. You can't see everything. You can't drive around with police, right?
Yeah, all it popped up in one day. I mean, what, you know, in a week. I mean, I don't drive.
Probably took a week, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you don't drive every road every week.
Unless a neighbor called and was like, hey, I think a road's being put in. You go with it this, I mean. But they might not have, I mean, just because you're putting none in, they might have thought by looking at it, oh, she's got 8 acres there. Well, first, you don't know if it's going to be three pieces. Just looking.
Did see it three real estate times?
Yes.
Okay.
So can we go back to what Max brought up about the November 11? Because I hadn't thought that, or November 2011, so yeah.
And that's, that's probably true, but I was never taught that either, so. There's a thing that I was brought from my office just today by Matt.
I kind of just kept reading and then I got to that point and I was like, yeah, that's a long time ago, kind of thing. I didn't think about it like that. So is that what, is what Max said? How he interprets that, is that the way we think it is?
I, I might even say the way I was taught, and it could be wrong, is when I became a new property owner, then it starts over. Like, that is a child number. It wasn't a sell off, but I'm the property owner, so I get to restart it. So then it just, the cycle begins again. That's how I was taught. I don't know.
But it wasn't in existence on the deed prior to 2011, because your name is a new, new name on the deed. It wasn't in existence on the books prior to 2011.
That's what I question, why would they have, why would that have been, why would a date been put in if it didn't mean something?
Because that's the way that.
Yes, I agree with you.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if I was ever told that in my office, that even felt like the next day level of that. Clearly, it's 2023 and we can't do that. It's not 2011. But the way that the whole courthouse motion isn't. the whole courthouse motion is a new property owner, so that's where you did.
Well, I guess that may first 2011.
You're like, all of the new stuff is your new.
That only applies to letter C, right? Not letter B. So...
Um, I don't, I, I don't know, I don't know if that's what he says is true or not.
I think it, I mean, I haven't read the thing, but it's only, that, that date was listed on her receipt. It's not listed, like, A and B, and it's not listed as like, would include all of them, but I don't know about future. This is what we're...
I don't know if it wouldn't be a bad idea to have, uh, the opinion of John Mead or somebody weigh in on, Emily's, on your processes, uh...
We can all, we don't have to say that, I mean, that's just, it's never brought up to change it, so that's the way.
Yeah, we, we've talked to John numerous times about this section, it's never, I mean, I don't wanna speak for him, but I don't think that's the intent of what we have for the exemptions. But he, I mean, it's never been that, brought up that May 1st, 2011. So, but, something new, I don't, it...
All these exemptions do is throw it back on.
It just leaves a gray area. And I...
It's, it, apparently it's intentional. Kick the can down the road. All right.
Here's another thing that you guys might wanna think about. Look at the same letters, they go to like, six and seven, right after what Max is reading. The county auditor shall not exempt an exempt subdivision for transfer unless it has been stated approved by the plan director and staff. Our auditor doesn't do maps, that's us. They used to have the black, the paper maps, they don't have anymore. We've had them for hours, we know how to play before 2011. I don't think that they should have, I mean, that doesn't make sense in the courthouse. Because the recorder sees it first, and then we divide it out, so.
The mayor goes into the auditor's office?
It goes into like...
Or the, the...
Yeah, yeah. I would already stand it approved by the minutes. I would already know, like, even deeds, they get them, like, I get them, and they such, I'll just get them in the auditor's office. I don't really know why they would even know that. Like, look, they used to, I think maybe the then, I don't know, but they did draw the maps before, like, this came about, it was all on paper, and they were in control of those paper maps, but they're not anymore. So that would've made sense at that time, because they were doing the mapping, but they don't do the mapping. That's another thing like this, probably. It's a question for John, but like, why would it be the auditor?
Because they have old records to be carried.
The auditor? Or the reporter?
They have two.
But, like, even if they would stamp off, like, the auditor's office, I don't know, do they stamp off those type of things? That are approved?
Yeah, because it goes for commissioners.
And the auditor stamps it? So maybe that's what it means.
Well, yeah, I think that's what it means. Because when you guys approve the subdivision, then it goes to the commissioners, and when we approve it, the auditor, being the secretary for the commissioners, has to stamp it.
So that's saying that even if it was an exempt one, like, if that was exempt, it should probably stamp right here, and then the auditor's office, that's what that's saying. So the number one, surveying.
Then if that was exempt, they still have to go through the hoops, do they not?
Never have before.
Huh?
They never have before. I'm not saying that's right, I'm just saying that's how it functions. Not throwing anybody under the bus.
Because Travis is the one that says it's exempt. Right?
That's what kills me, is I don't know how, how do, how do I know as a property owner that I need to go to Travis to get that exemption? Like, I just feel like, hey, it's...
Oh, yeah, there was.
You know, I don't know that if I'm, if I'm...
That's kind of what I said, I think it should happen before. I don't know how to get that information out there, I don't even know if that's an answer, but.
I don't, I don't know.
And that's kind of, where I come from, uh, on this is, as, you know, as a CSGP guy, if I didn't want to drive by this, what we're talking about, I can see those signs, that's a large common planned development. That, that's definitely in violation of the CSGP. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna knock on homeowner's doors, and wanna know why, who the developer is, and why there's not a planer with a statement on that. And they don't, and I didn't, it's imperative, if this complaint, if this plan commission calls it a subdivision or not, it's a large common planned development, uh, over an acre. And those, those owners don't have the opportunity, I mean, because the developer never had to go through any of these checklist items. I mean, somebody thought it had, and made these lots two acre lots, but if they were half acre lots, people are still selling them and doing what they wanna do on them because they never came before, and I don't, I don't understand, I don't understand how we, how we can go through that loophole, but...
Well, the reason they got through the loophole is because there was an existing driveway, so they weren't required to get a 911 address, so they weren't required to get with the highway superintendent about access off the road, because the main road was already there, been there for eons. That's how they get a book, that's how it swept through cracks right there.
It could've been a simple call over to my office, not presenting this as a subdivision, and said, "Hey, I just bought this piece of property, I'm thinking about, you know, maybe", or they said, "How many times can I divide it?". "Well, is it part of a subdivision?", was, you know, whatever. "No, it's not, it's just a piece of property, how many times can I divide it?". "Twice, okay, good enough."
And they did it twice, and they never turned it on.
And then there you go.
They're not doing it twice.
Or, "I'm gonna make two divisions, one's gonna be to whoever, and one's gonna be to my brother", "Well, that's one division", not two. They don't even get close to the subdivision requirements.
I think that also it hits a difference, because when you're working it every day, the vermin is different, but a survey is different than a plaque.
So tell me what the difference is?
A new survey, you want your property surveyed?
Yeah, we just have the surveyor from our place.
Okay, that's a survey. Founder's survey, whoever you wanna run it, is a survey. Woodhurst Farms isn't a survey. It's a plaque, because they divided it, and it had already lost. It had rules and whatever governs everyone, all the stuff that's on it.
They would protect those, they got it approved by this.
So whenever it gets recorded, it gets recorded as a plaque, or at least it gets recorded as a survey.
So I got this survey. I want to sell.
Okay, so you just had your property surveyed?
Yes, and we put all the tracks together, back together into one. So now it's all one big chunk of it.
And that's it got recorded yet? I don't know. Okay, it's got recorded, so that's all your parcels by the book, one?
One.
Okay. But say you wanted, you had that survey done, it was already one, but you wanted to make it all those tracks. Should you, is that a subdivision?
No, because it's not for the dividend, it was not for the purpose of offer, sale, lease, or development.
At the time.
At the time. So is it when the first...
At the time.
Is it with the, that's the time of the first sale?
I don't know.
Is that the time when it becomes a true subdivision?
So when you had the survey done, your intent was not to make money, but you, you could've, you didn't, but you could've made it have more than one track. But your intent was not to make money. But maybe 25 years later, your intent changed. So is that at the time that it becomes a subdivision? Or is it at the time that your survey was done? And I guess that's a question for John.
Other than with the intent of dividing a piece of property, what would be the reason why somebody would have it?
They're going to the bank, and they own a lot of acres, and they need a mortgage, they wanna refinance, and they don't wanna lose all their, they don't wanna lose anything. I don't know. I mean, I don't know why people do things, but...
But at that...
That happens. People do that sometimes.
At that point, you're dividing the property. Because if at that point, I defaulted on my loan, the bank is going to take that divided 10 acres.
I just, I don't know, I think it should be easier than someone's intention, or they should got five pieces of property subdivision. It's like, I'm sending it to subdivision.
What if they don't wanna call anybody, they just get on our website, look everything up. I don't wanna argue, and then all of a sudden, just like Emily was saying, they never even called me, I mean, well, we're not breaking no rules. We followed the ordinance, and all of a sudden, it's in front of her, in front of the reporters, it's too late.
Except they never had, you never stamped approved, like, the section, I know this is some of the county auditor, but, or in section on five, the plan directors will stamp the exempt, the exempt subdivision approved.
There was a violation there, for sure. So you didn't approve it one way or the other, it didn't matter what we called it, or what you called it, you didn't stamp it exempt, you didn't call it exempt. Says so right in the rules, but you're, they're supposed to come to you.
I, I don't, that I don't know, but I mean, I'm just gonna take, all of them subdivisions, they'll be submitted to the plan director or staff for review. If the plan director or staff determines that the proposed subdivision meets the standards to be exempt from the subdivision planning process, he or she shall stamp the exempt subdivision as approved. So you can't just avoid your office, you, even this one particularly. They need to bring this, they need to bring that survey to you, and you, the way this reads, shall deem it exempt or not, and stamp it approved if you deem it exempt. The way I read that.
What if they didn't do it as a, like, when we first said, what if they didn't do it as a complete survey, and they just sold off one parcel? I'm not arguing.
No, I'm not.
I'm just telling you what's a property.
I just think that, for, and we've talked about this for an hour now, and now I'm gonna have gone all the way, but I, I think I would make the suggestion that at the very minimum, you, your office contacts this developer, and at the very minimum, you get some plans in front of you that you would stamp exempt if you deem they be exempt from this, the way our, or this reads. Because it, and like, at the very minimum, they can't just bypass, um, your office.
Okay. Okay. How are we gonna, okay, fine. How are we gonna stop this from happening again then?
That's what we need to think about, because I don't think anybody knows.
So if I wanted to do an actual subdivision, like, I wanna flat it out, I wanna make Woodhurst, but I don't think it'll sell that.
I already got it.
Yeah. What would be my first step? How do I know that?
You go to the county list, then.
Okay.
Normally you would say,
Look at the checklist.
You, when you would call your surveyor, I guess, you would tell them you wanna make something, you own this property, and you wanna make a subdivision, and they would say, your county has a zone, one missing zoning, and then that would kick start it, I assume. I don't know if it's true, I just assume, because like, you don't just know that. I would have to tell you that.
Well, surveyable, but ever surveyable now, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, every county has its own rules, so I assume that would probably be an initial point, I'd say.
But any way that it goes, in order, I mean, because I hear what you're saying with finding out what the intention is. But I can, I have the intention of doing one thing now, and then that change sometime later. But if I've already gotten it on the map, that this piece of property is divided off from this larger piece of property, that point is where, to me, it needs to replay. Not when it's sold, not when it's transferred, but when we have divided this piece of property one time.
You gotta figure out the way to catch that, right? That might be a chore. Well, not to take anything away from, from people who want to deed off property, their family members, you know, I, I respect that. But I think Deager brought up some good things a few minutes ago. You know, what's the intent of the land usage? And if we need to think about concentration of residences, and because of public safety, access. And my big thing is, is this person, person dividing this property in parcels for the development, for, for financial gain? Is this person a developer? Or an individual that just wants to deed off a couple pieces of property? My opinion still is, even though you may stamp it exempt, that this person over here on 56 is a developer. But our, our rules say, well, they don't say plain. So you can't, you can't fault them for that. But we, we need to be aware, this, this won't be the only one that comes up, I'm sure, there's probably some out there that been like that for years, and nobody just thought anything about it, but, you know. When you've got more than two lots for sale with two different realtors of property that you own, and you put a new road in, you're a developer. You're developing the property for gain, for profit, period, plain and simple. So, something to think about. Now, moving along, thinking ahead ourselves, does anybody know about where we are as far as wrapping all this up? So someday you can present it to the three commissioners, and we can vote on it, and... I think we pretty well got through everything, except this, these, these zone maps, right?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, that's not entirely.
So do, do we need those zone maps? Just, just because we, we think this area is commercial, do we need to officially make it a commercial zone? These little pockets that we have here today, I always use Morgan's Market area as a good example, and it's actually growing, because we've got a new dollar store out there now. So you, you've got about seven or eight actual businesses out there now. You got a child daycare, you got a diesel truck place, you got Cottonium Enterprises, you got Morgan's Market, you got the Dollar Store, and you got the Used Lumber Yard, then you've got Diesel Repair. Yeah. And then, and then the other, and then the legitimate actual saw mill, so...
I would, I would think you have this on it. I would, I would think you have this on it. I mean, I just, I mean, I know what the rules for all these zones, and I, I got to know what the zone is, so you have to follow it, but I don't know that to be.
I don't think it would be that difficult to define a zone. I mean, if you get businesses in a...
It's by, I have talked to the mapping company about how other counties do it, and it is by property line. You don't like, just like make a square, it's like this square. It, it'll be like odd shaped with the property lines.
Oh, okay.
I know that much.
Okay.
But I know that like it could be like a really odd shape, it could, you know.
Yeah, kind of like, yeah, you stand there, shooting windows.
Yeah, it does not feel like blocked off, it's just by property, property lines, it's like, so... But whenever you go in and split it on, the property lines might alter. And then there's might need to be exactly, just throw that out. But that's something that, what that comes about, we need to remember that.
Okay, well, I'd like for you people to think about what would be the easiest way to tackle that. And I suppose it would be to start with the assessor's office, and get a list, and cross-reference it with an area as far as what's, what's taxed commercial. To me, that would be about the easiest way to decide what little, you know, like around Pekin, around Campbell'sburg, you know. Little York. So you being the key contact person in that, I know you I know you're, you're going to, you're going to be out for a while later.
Oh, yeah, by the way, just a heads up, I could be at next one's meeting, or I could not. Just depends on how my search and appointment goes on the 27th, so. I could be out for a while, in the near future, just. You'll have to wait on me, I don't want to sort of know that it's not, that I'm like, yeah, I just have something going on, so.
Next meeting is what day?
11 July? Third? Yep? July 3rd? Is, do we want to bump it to the 10th?
Probably not, I think so.
Probably, when will you be back?
Never.
August? Okay.
Six days. Oh, that was long, it was a long, I went on about, Sunday else.
What about you, Danielle? Third or the tenth, the third? July?
The third is on the first of the day.
Okay.
That's nice.
Okay. Alright, we'll just keep it the same schedule then.
What do we have with Harrison County subdivision ordinances that were reviewed?
Oh, we're here. We, we passed that, voted on it in the past, and John's, I think John's in the process of kind of tweaking it, but the yeah, we adopted Harrison County 5.0 regarding the performance model.
That is all we needed.
What's that?
That's all we were adding once upon a time.
Yeah, because...
Well, the other stuff that we added, but that was all I was saying.
We already had
All set.
And he was going to double check and look through that, so it wasn't redundant or anything, but for instance, in this subdivision, this current subdivision ordinance, it, it already had provisions for, for instance, like your drainage issues and all those dirty details that need to be in there. So, yeah, we we approved that in, in regards to the performance model, part of. Is this right there? I guess we do. I'll make it, I'll make another visitor. Second? Can you take it again?
I'll do it.
Can you take the notes?
Yes. All the favor of a drink, I can eat it.